Crazy season for Yvette.
Hello Judy. Good to see you.
Hi there.
Hi there. Hello Frank, good to see you, Ms. Pinto. Excellent.
Delighted to be here.
Oh, good answer Lisa. Mr. Barth. Ms. Becca. We saw the early birds. Alright, looks like we've got Sharna in the building, excellent. Becca, are you in the building? Yeah, how about you Ms. Tara? No.
Rose, you're with us.
I, we could tell, he's got that really nice looking background. It looks like he cleaned up a little bit, good job Rose. Presentation. Commissioner Taylor, welcome.
Thank you. Hopefully everyone is doing well, at least you guys are looking well.
Very kind.
We are still waiting for the chair to log on.
Yep. Terrific, hello Maricela, welcome, good to have you.
Hi, good afternoon.
We are waiting just a couple more minutes and then we'll be ready to roll. The supervisor needs to be let in, ouch. Linda, you on that? Or Amada, rather?
Yeah, yes, we're working on moving her over.
Okie dokie. She's knocking at our door.
Good afternoon, I've been trying to get in, but who knows?
Success, welcome.
Thanks. Now I feel welcome.
We are glad to have you, and I think Linda, can you report to the chair if we are ready to commence?
We are ready to commence, we do have Corin.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, this meeting is called to order, and Ms. Rose, would you call the roll please?
Judy Abdo.
Here.
Deborah Allen.
Here.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Frank Ramos.
Here.
Carol Segala. Ramalis Taylor.
Here.
Maricela Ramirez.
Here.
Carla Platas Howell. Jacqueline McCroskey.
Here.
Robert Byrd. Deanne Tilton. And Sheila Q.
Here.
Corin is present.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you read the ground rules for the meeting?
I will do that, Madam Chair, thank you and good afternoon members of the board and public. Today's meeting, I'm going to be going over our same information that we've been operating under AB361. As you know, members of the First LA Board of Commissioners and staff may continue to participate in these meetings via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1st, 2024. And in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. Now regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comments. And the first way is that you can email me in advance of the meeting at LVO@firstlva.org the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting. And as a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. Now, any public comments received after 1:30pm will become a part of public records. And during the meeting, public members can also use the Q&amp;A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q&amp;A chat box before the item being commented on is presented. And when submitting requests to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q&amp;A chat box will be addressed in the order they are received. And once public members hear their name being called, they will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. And we will call their name twice before moving on to the next public speaker. Two minutes as a reminder is allotted for each comment, and once two minutes have passed, we will move on to the next public comment. And finally, before we do begin this meeting, just some reminders. To minimize public background disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak. And to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time and to ensure for a coherent dialogue, we do ask that board members use the hand raise or chat box function to express an interest in speaking. And I will coordinate with our commission chair and call you in the order that it is received. And with the exception of adjournment, which will be called for by the chair, a formal roll call will be done for all action items. And a reminder to all board members to take yourselves off mute prior to roll call. And finally, if technical assistance is required during the meeting, you can contact me at 213-276-9389, and I will connect you with IT. And with that, I do hand this meeting back to our honorable chair.
Thank you very much, that will take us then to our first item, which is a report out by council on the closed sessions that have preceded this meeting.
Yes Chair, thank you, so on September 16th and on October 3rd, the Executive Committee of the Commission convened closed sessions. And from those closed sessions, there were no reportable actions taken.
Alright, thank you, so that makes it an information item. Which then moves us to the consent agenda. Does any member wish to remove anything from consent to have a discussion? Hearing none, is there any public comment on the consent agendas?
There are no public comments on the consent agenda items.
Alright, may I have a motion then to adopt the consent agenda?
Commissioner Taylor, I move we accept the consent agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, please call the roll to approve the consent agenda.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Deborah Allen.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Frank Ramos.
Yes.
Carol Segala. Ramalis Taylor.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
And Sheila Q.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda are remarks from me. And I find that my mind is very much about coming to sort of a close in terms of my participation on this commission and really almost eight years of chairing it. This is not my last meeting and I will, you know, make some remarks obviously of gratitude and sort of summing up. But I, I want to really start by thanking the staff and the community. All the clients who have participated and through service have enjoyed contact with First 5 LA. To, of course, our executive director and really to this whole commission. You know, it, it is one thing to be in a legislature. Like my, my service in Sacramento and Kim and I interfaced quite a bit during those years. And it's, you know, it's just great, you make a law, you brush off your hands and you move to the next bill, hoping that somebody will do something, you know, about the laws that you make. And when I was elected to the Board of Supervisors, which is both executive and legislative, and then appointed to serve on this board as its chair, because the supervisor appointed is somewhat automatically the chair. The framework that First 5 was acting under was, was pretty limited. And of course, as it is today, continuously fiscally challenging. And in a way, it seems ironic to me that it was both a good thing that fewer people were smoking, because that was really what we wanted to do with our various public service announcements and public health and, you know, all the help of smoking cessation. But the result of it, of course, was that there's, would be fewer, you know, fewer dollars coming into First 5 and trying to figure out all the things that we wanted and needed to do. And it it really underwent an enormous transition after Kim arrived, which was a little, I think, before I got here. The entire enterprise did a really deep dive, looking at partnerships, at programs, at fiscal challenges, at staffing, at vision. And so many productive and provocative conversations that led to, you know, revamping really the organization. In terms of its direction and its purpose and what it means to be nimble, what it means to tighten your belt and yet do more, what it means to think virtually continuously about mission, about outcomes, and about our children. So I have just begun to really think about summation, though I want to talk really more about future, I think, in my last meeting. But I just wanted to express how impressed I am and how I think other organizations could really learn from the the self-assessment that First 5 LA does to really try to figure out how do we accomplish a nearly impossible mission? And how do we think about that mission? So that it says exactly what we think through a dynamic set of actions really needs to be done for our kids and their families. So I, I will leave it there, I'm just saying that you know, at, at the end of something, you really start to think a lot about it. And this organization is very special. As its clientele is very special and I, I think really impressive. And I will say more at, at the next meeting. And I think I'll leave it at that. Ms. Rose, are there any persons who wanted to make public comment about my comments?
No public comments on your comments.
Alright, thank you so much. So Kim, we'll turn to you for your thoughts today.
Thank you so much, and I'll, I'll begin with some comments regarding your comments, which relate to my comments. Which I think is not surprising, is the chair and I both approach our, today being our second to last commission meetings. And really appreciate Supervisor Sheila, your comments and initial reflections and feedback regarding the organization, its evolution. And from where you sit, what, what makes First 5 LA special? I think your comments really resonate with, with certainly with me and the rest of the team, so thank you. Like you, I have also been reflecting a fair amount of late. I've been attributing it to the fall. I love this time of year, I love the colors, I love the cooling temperatures, I love whatever leaves in California still fall that are falling. I love the return of football, I still love the 49ers guys, sorry. Just, just get over it, I do. But I also recognize that in the fall, it, it, the fall is a time of change and transition. And, you know, fall requires us to be both present in the moment, but also thinking about the future and acknowledging a change in seasons, a change in mindset, a change in terms of how we, we think about what the future holds in the new year. And, you know, I understand that, that transitions and changes of any nature can be fraught and full of uncertainty and can contribute to discomfort. And I want to acknowledge that this fall is a season of considerable change for First 5 LA in the context of the leadership transitions that we're speaking to. So it's, it's a bittersweet time, because there is some looking back and reflection as well as a looking forward. But I, I think while bittersweet, I also view this moment in time for me at First 5 LA as a time of reflection and learning and a time of tremendous pride in not just where we've been, but where we are, and most importantly, where, where we're heading. I, I get that throughout my tenure, there's been a lot of change. I see that change not just as a product of my, my own nature and inclination, but I really see it as a product of us having a board and a staff team that brings a lot of urgency to the importance of the work we do, as the supervisor just noted. I see a board and a staff that are very much committed to not just micros, micro impact, but macro impact, I like to talk about at a scale worthy of our county's children. And I see a board and staff that bring a genuine commitment to learning and to reflection and to continuous improvement. And all of that contributes to change, and I frankly, I know it's hard and challenging, but I think that has and will continue to be a good thing for the organization. I've shared, we've shared with the board in recent months that we information about a number of the initiatives we have underway and solicited your, your helpful thoughts and feedback. All of which relate to the important evolution that First 5 LA continues to go through. And these are initiatives that we have underway that I think are really fundamental to First 5 LA's growth at present and well into the future. Today's meeting, we're going to be lifting up some important examples of that type of foundational work that is reflective of our learning value and of our commitment to reflecting, to learning and to refining, so we're going to talk about our annual audit, which we do every year. And we have another great, great report that Rose will be speaking to. We're going to talk about our annual report to First Life California, which always shines an interesting and important light on who we serve and what we know about them as well as our work. We've got some refinements to our business process and governance guidelines and bylaws. And as we've talked with the board for the past couple of meetings, we are deeply engaged in our first ever review and refinement cycle called for in the strategic plan. So there's a lot going on. And we're doing so in the context of a transition. And as I've shared with my colleagues, we know transitions happen quickly. And they involve a lot of different moving parts. Most of my career has been in government. And when you work in government, I talked to the leadership team about this, when you work in government, the supervisor and others know, change is the norm, you come in with your elected official and when they leave, you leave. So you come in with an understanding that your job in the context of change is to make that transition as smooth and seamless as possible for the good of the people and the good of the work. And it's not always easy, but it's, it's super important and essential. And a great example of that that I shared with the leadership team related to 2010, when Governor Brown's administration was coming in and I was Secretary of Health and Human Services, and it was happening at the very time that President Obama had enacted the Affordable Care Act and Governor Schwarzenegger had enacted the implementing legislation to begin movement forward. I knew as an outgoing agency secretary, there's nothing more important to the people of California in terms of their health, their wellbeing, than effective implementation of the Affordable Care Act in California. I also knew that I wasn't going to be the one to lead it. Yet it was my job, along with John, who is the Director of Social Services and others, to make sure that the Brown administration had what they needed to carry that critical work forward. And we were fully deployed and fully dedicated, we called that Operation Finishing Strong. And as I reflect upon my remaining couple months of First 5 LA, I am deeply committed to finishing strong at First 5 LA. And I trust the board and certainly the staff as well are seeing that deep commitment, not just on my part, but the organization's part. Whether it be supporting the board and its critical process of choosing the next ED, refining our strategic plans so that the next executive director, the board in 2023 can begin with a focus on those critical refinements to further focus our work and our strategies and to measure our progress. We're beginning implementation of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Action Plan. Our new Chief Operating Officer, Jared Nino, is leading the development of an initial operational plan for First 5 LA to make sure that there's shared understanding and alignment across the organization regarding our operational priorities and goals for First 5. We're continuing to learn, live into and learn about our transitional approach to hybrid work so that future decisions are aligned to the nature of our work with our values. Both in terms of our workplace policies and our business needs or building use needs, and then we've got critical core business functionality that's well underway, such as our performance evaluations, our budget adjustments and budget development, contract renewals, all of which is critical and will roll up into work planning come, come the new year. And then of course, bringing to the board next month, our recommended policy agenda for 2023. So there's a lot going on, but I want to underscore with the board. We do not see these important streams of work as kind of discreet and separate projects or processes being led by independent teams. We really see the body of this work as part of a broader developmental arc for First 5 LA. As a part of our effort to continue to lean into the potential we have and are increasingly demonstrating to be a really powerful catalyst for change for young children. So I'm grateful to have this opportunity to, with you all and so many others, finish strong. And I know I'm doing all I can do, and I know we together, board, staff, broader community alike, are doing all we can to ensure that the foundation upon which new leadership steps in can really take this organization with all of you to the next level. I recognize that finishing strong is finishing for me, but the nature of this work is such that it's not going to be done in December. It's, it's never done. Because just as the seasons change, so too are we going to continue to change and adapt and learn and continuously improve. And what a gift and opportunity it is to work in an organization that does such profoundly important work. And, and does so with the leadership and the guidance and the support of a board that is deeply committed to us being a stronger First 5, a more focused First 5, and a more impact oriented First 5 to ensure that every child will reach their full developmental potential throughout those most critical years of prenatal to five. So that's a big part of our conversation today in terms of that, that strategic focus and taking the learning and continuing to assess and refine grounded centered in the needs of children, families and communities, so I'm eager to see what we're able to accomplish in the balance of this calendar year and even more so with this organization. All of you and so many others will be accomplishing in the years ahead. Like, like the supervisor, I'll have more to say next, next month, but I, I'm looking forward to saying a lot more about the supervisor next month. So I'll, I'll hand the microphone back to our esteemed chair.
Uh oh, I don't know if that's a threat or a promise, as we used to say in elementary school. Thank you very much. Kim and Ms. Rose, are there any public comments about our executive director's report?
Confirming there are no public comments on our ED's report.
Alright, thank you, and thanks again, Kim. We will obviously be in touch over the next 35 years, and I look forward to it. So the next, the next item is one upon which we will take some action. And that would be to, if we so decide, approve the draft of the annual comprehensive financial report. And we will then, before that, get a, a report on that draft and also including the independent auditors' report for our fiscal year, which ended last June 30th. So let me turn this over to Raul and any others on the team that will present this item about the draft annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I can just confirm, is everyone able to see my presentation? Great, thank you Linda. So good afternoon Commissioner, let me just start with the presentation overview. Good afternoon Commissioners, First 5 LA staff and guests. My presentation today on the annual comprehensive financial report will be a highlight from the detailed presentation that we provided to the commission at the September PPC. For today, I will touch upon the overall results of the fiscal year 2122 audit. I will provide some highlights of the overall revenues and expenditures, and I will wrap up our presentation with the ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2022. For fiscal year ending June 2022, I am happy to report that our CPA firm partner Canali Secucium from iBailey LLP, along with the finance team at the September PPC, whoops, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead, at the September PPC noted that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is an unmodified opinion. And doing iBailey's normal course of performing their assigned function of the audit, no material deficiencies in internal controls were identified. There were no audit findings or adjustments made throughout the process. So in plain speak, what we have before you is a clean audit for fiscal year 2122. Now to highlight some of the transactions throughout fiscal year 2122 that are critical for us to understand where we're at as of the end of June 30th of 2022. Our total revenue for fiscal year 2122 was roughly $68 million, which $55.3 million was from Prop 10 tobacco tax. First 5 LA also received $18.5 million from Proposition 56, which represents the 2021 fiscal year's backfill. Over, over the fiscal year, we also received other revenues that accumulated to $6.2 million. And at the end of the year, And at the end of the year, for the purpose of a government accounting practices, we do a fair market value adjustment of the county pool investment. And that, that adjustment was a downward reduction of 11.2. So even though we grossed a total of $80 million, when you consider the $11.2 million adjustment, our total revenue for this, for this past year was $68.8 million. Now to pivot to some of our expenditures. As reflected in this slide, our total expenditures were $94.4 million, with $75.8 million of it related to program expenditures. The $75.8 million does represent the resources that are going out to support many of our program and projects that we fund throughout our budget and related to the outcomes and the outputs that we achieve throughout the fiscal year. $6.5 million represents the overall expenditures related to our program operating expenditures. And when I reflect around operating expenditures, what I'm referring to is the personnel cost that's driving the work within our program department and the related SNS cost, which is supplies and services. And then related to our overall administrative expenditures, again, mostly driven by personnel, we see a total expenditures of $12.1 million for the entire year. So with that said, the net results for the year and total fund balance is $287.8 million. This pie chart really reflects the constraints per reflected by board action and in compliance to GAAP accounting. So this is a nice pie chart that reflects the breakdown, which 884,000 in non-spendable. In the committed, you have roughly $91.4 million. In the unassigned, you have the $75.3 million. And then the assigned, where the majority of our fund balance lives, is $120.4 million. So again, this is a short presentation compared to what we have brought to you at the PPC where we go into greater detail. We have our managing partner come and represent per the GAAP requirements. For the next steps, once the board takes action on this item and the approval is made, the report will be submitted to the State Controllors Office and First 5 LA, California by November 1st to complete our reporting requirements. And then internally, what we do is the financial report information will now be used to how we update our long-term financial plan. And as we go into the budgeting cycle, starting in January and February. So before I end my presentation, I really want to thank our senior leadership team and our commissioners for their leadership and support and to my colleagues across the organization for really leaning in and completing the clean audit for 22, 2122. I now pass it to you, Madam Chair, for action.
Thank you very much. Before we take action, I'd like to see if there are any questions or comments from members of the board. And Judy, I'd ask you to call on people. I think you can see whose hands are raised. Is that correct?
Correct. I see no hands up, however.
Okay. If that is the case, then let us proceed to public comment, if any, on this item.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right, thank you so much. Then this is an action item to approve the draft of the annual comprehensive financial report. Do I have a motion from anyone to approve the draft?
To move.
Thank you. And a second?
Second, Frank.
Thank you. Please call the role on this item.
Trudy Abdo?
Yes.
Deborah Allen?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez?
Yes.
And Sheila Kyo?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
All right, good. Thank you so much. The, the next item also involves the way in which we consider the budget. It is not an action item. But there had been quite a discussion about the numbers of touchpoints we have about our budget each year for the, for the board and whether or not it was necessary to keep doing the process that we had adopted. So let me turn it back over to Raul and ask for the report and if there is a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before you is specifically related to our mid-year budget process. This item is requesting from staff to approve a one-time streamlined process for the mid-year revision of the fiscal year 2223 budget to collect and document high-level changes in spending through a mid-year fiscal year update, which we will provide through a memo to be brought to the board as a receive and file document. What's before you is a memo that highlights our current approach and a proposed approach. And we are requesting that authorization is given to the leadership team, including the senior leadership and staff to make and approve budget adjustments between line items $25,000 or more and/or between the programmatic and operating budget with the final approval with the executive director once we are aware of who our next executive director is. The adjustment will adhere within the annual spending limits approved by the board in June 2022. And what that means is that our intent is that we're not coming back requesting for additional resources that we are living within the spending limits that was approved by the board. The proposed approach will still allow us to share updated budget information regarding the potential revised resources need for the year and/or highlight any areas of concerns at the same time, alleviating the time commitment required for an in-depth assessment. The proposed streamlined mid-year process will enable us to redirect our staff and board resources more effectively to support other organization-wide efforts currently underway and continue to perform our day-to-day responsibilities and to also navigate the transition of leadership within the organization. That's all reflected within the memo that is before you. Our plan is, if the board is comfortable with our proposed approach, we will include this as a approved item on the consent for the November board meeting. And that is the overall review for this memo.
Okay, so just to clarify, you have said a couple of times, if the board likes this direction, you would bring it back at the November meeting for, on the consent agenda for actual board approval. So it's a bit of an informal discussion about whether members of the board feel comfortable with this, but no formal action. Is that correct?
No formal action for today. Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I guess the question that Raul and his team have for us is whether we feel comfortable with the direction of a streamlined process for this 2223 budget. And with the possibility of recommending giving staff authority to move some funding between line items of the operating budget or between the program and operating budgets, which would still have the same oversight by the executive team that fiscal actions have now, when, in, at the lower limit. So is anyone wishing to ask a question or make a comment about this discussion?
Ramalas Taylor?
Go ahead, Ramalas.
Okay, I have some clarification questions. One is on your memo. When you say leadership team, it doesn't explicitly indicate that the executive director would have the NS chain of command to approve this process. You did mention it in your dialogue that that was the case. So I need to have that clarified in the next memo that you put on the agenda. Who you mean specifically by leadership team? Are you talking about at the manager level or at the director level? Who are you specifically talking about? The other thing in the memo that concerns me is in the second page, where it said adherence to annual spending limits approved by the board in June 2022. Annual spending in excess of the estimated limit will be presented to the board. And the question should be for its approval. You should add that statement there, that the board approves that if you're going to expend more than what we've already approved. The other thing is that you left out in your presentation that this is a one-time process, right?
That is correct. It is solely noted in the memo in that first sentence. And yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all hearing that, that this is one time. Because of all the work that everyone is doing, that you're asking for this change to facilitate so they're not overwhelmed by everything else they're doing, right?
That is correct. There are several different projects that are currently underway. We have the strategic plan refinement and alignment process. There is the day-to-day responsibilities across the organization. We are going through changes in the, at the leadership level within the organization. And there are just many things that are happening at the same time that are externally facing and internally facing. And it is because of that, that is why finance took a backseat, kind of overlooked the process as a whole and see, you know, based on several years, mid-year budget process and looking at best practices, we feel very comfortable and confident that, you know, this is something that we can have a lighter touch approach. In Norway, are we trying to avoid our transparency? We're giving the board the same level of information that we have done in the past. It's not going through all the different touchpoints, both internally and externally with the different committees. And it's a lighter touch and level of information that we do provide to the board.
Then all I ask is that you make the clarification based on your statement in the memo that not only is the leadership team, whoever that is, because you haven't made that clear, at what level are you talking about leadership team? But that the executive director will approve internal processes. So any movement up, down, or whatever, based on their review, right?
Our external, our external process, and we don't get into great detail about the actual process, but the process itself, everything has always been elevated to not only the entire SLT, the senior leadership team, but to the executive director too. It goes through different phases. The entire leadership team, we come together and we look at the adjustments and then we take it to the SLT and then final approval is at the executive director before it even hits as an agenda item to the full board.
I just wanted the board to understand that process a little more.
Yes, and I appreciate the, the comment and we will make sure to, to highlight in the final draft.
Okay, and make sure that we say that anything that exceeds what has been approved in June 2022 is, is presented to the board for its approval, right?
That is correct.
Okay, please make that statement in your memo for consent.
Okay.
That's the end of my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have their hand up?
There are no other hands up.
If I can just make one more quick comment, Madam Chair. This would probably, this most likely will be my last presentation to our current executive director and to you as our Madam Chair. And I just, from my heart and the staff from our department, we really appreciate the mentorship that both of you have brought to the board and to our staff. We appreciate the collaboration that you have afforded us throughout the, your, both of your tenders. And most importantly, we appreciate the stability, whoops, the stability that you have, the stability that you have brought to both the organization and the board. And my intention was not to be recorded, but it is what it is. But thank you very much from the bottom of my heart and my staff. Thank you.
Ms. Jager, thank you very much as well. And I will, of course, and I'm sure Kim will pretty righteously praise the staff at our last meeting, but I appreciate your comments. For me, in terms of this item, I have, although I always appreciate transparency, I felt that in this organization, we've sometimes had a little too many times of transparency where there didn't seem to be a great deal of change. So I appreciate this sort of, you know, shrinking the number of times that we consider the budget because it doesn't take away from any duty or understanding that the board would have. And it simply, I think, uses the board's time, the commission's time more efficiently. So we look forward to this item at the next meeting. And certainly, if any commissioners have second thoughts or any questions they want to place to Kim or to Raul during this next several weeks, I'm sure you feel free to do so. If there's anything sort of nagging at you about it that you didn't quite get to, you know, while this item was up. So one last time, anybody have any first or second thoughts? Hearing none? Ms. Rowe, is there any public comment on this item?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right, so this was for information and taking action as was indicated at the next meeting. So let us then move on to the next item. We are required to make an annual report to First 5 California. This is an action item in which we will, if we so choose, to, we will approve the annual report to First 5. So Hari, I believe you're presenting this item.
Yes, hello, everyone. Just making sure, can everyone see the screen? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Commissioners. On an annual basis, First 5 LA submits a report to First 5 California in order to fulfill requirements of Prop 10 funding. I share preliminary report findings at the September 22nd Program and Planning Committee meeting. And the purpose of this presentation is to share the final report findings and request authorization from the board to submit the report to First 5 California. So I'll begin with the overview of the state annual reporting requirements and then transition to review of the financial data. From there, I'll summarize the key findings before going into our next steps. So as you know, First Fives are funded through Prop 10 and one of the funding requirements of this legislation is a state annual report. In order to generate this report, First 5 California collects data from each First 5 county commission. There are three types of data that First There are three types of data that First Five California requests. Data relates related to revenue expenditures, data on populations reached and their demographics, which I shared during the September P P C meeting, and a summary of evaluations conducted and key highlights and accomplishments for each county. Today, I'll focus on the data related to revenue expenditures, which you heard more about from our finance team in the previous agenda item. I also want to acknowledge my First Five L A colleagues for their collaboration in this organization-wide effort for this annual reporting to the state. Details about all three sections is included in the memo and attachment one, First Five L A's fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two state annual report. Once the data from all fifty-eight counties is received, First Five California will synthesize this information into a single report. So now I'm going to go deeper into the first section and explore the financial findings. Report findings indicate that in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, our revenues decreased by around thirty million dollar or sixteen point four percent from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Our expenditures decreased by around seven million dollars or six point eight percent. This resulted in a net decrease to our fund balance of twenty-eight million, five hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars or nine percent. Overall, the revenue is decreasing at more than twice the rate of the decrease in expenditures. This finding lifts up the importance of our long-term financial plan and efforts to reduce reliance on the fund balance and the need to align revenues and expenditures over time. Our programmatic expenditures decreased compared to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one across the first five California result areas, with the exception of child health. Our welcome baby and home visiting contracts, which focuses on reaching the youngest of our children, makes up eighty-six percent of this child health expenditures. With that overview of financial findings, let's discuss key findings from each of the three sections of the report and then go into next steps. For section one, I have already covered today that our revenues, expenditures, and fund balance continue to decrease, which is consistent with our fiscal reality. In September, we shared findings from section two demographics, which indicated that the majority of children reached through First Five L A investments are younger than three years old, which aligns with our emphasis on prioritizing the critical period of development that occurs prenatal through age three. In addition, First Five L A Investments reach more children than the previous fiscal year and mostly reach children that are Latino and Hispanic and households that are primarily English-speaking. In the September P P C presentation, we also noted that there is an underrepresentation of children across other race and ethnicity groups with the exception of Black and African-American children. There were also an underrepresentation of children from households where Spanish and other languages are primarily spoken compared to L A County as a whole. Finally, section three focuses on key accomplishments and evaluation activities. In this section, we highlight key accomplishments related to our systems change work aimed at advancing equity, empowering communities, and improving systems through data use. Several grantees implemented strategies to advance equitable access to quality care. For example, given the disparities in maternal and infant mortality rates for the Black and African-American community, hospitals participating in the Cherish Features for Black Moms and Babies Project implemented systems-level strategies like updating their hyper hypertension management protocols to ensure timely treatment. These strategies aim to improve the safety and experience of Black moms and birthing people during childbirth. Efforts to empower communities included strategies like participatory budgeting, through which community members in some best-star communities decided together in prioritizing and allocating public funding. In addition, data was generated to improve systems through a survey aimed at better understanding the impact of COVID nineteen on families with young children. In the evaluation summary, we highlighted key evaluation activities such as the development of the AIM evaluation plan and the implementation of the welcome baby virtual study. Once completed, evaluation findings will generate insights into outcomes, promising practices, areas of growth, and policy recommendations for future systems change efforts. Additional information on all three sections is detailed in the October board memo. Our immediate next step is to receive submission approval from the board today. We will then submit the report through First Five California's data system by the October thirty-first deadline. In addition, following the conversations from the P P C meeting last month, we'll be having conversations internally as well as with our grantees to explore why certain groups are underrepresented, including those from households where English is not the primary language and children who are Asian or Pacific Islander. With that, I'll hand it over to Chair Keel, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, this is an action item for us to approve the presentation to go as our report to First Five California. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions? Judy, if you would check for raised hands.
I don't see any raised hands. Oh, Deborah Allen has raised her hand.
I wonder.
Okay, Deborah.
Oh, thanks so much. I wondered if you could go back to the slide about the proportions of children in different race, ethnicity groups participating in programs. The reason, the reason I'm asking is that there's an assumption that need is is equally distributed. And I'm concerned about saying that we're not underrepresenting in particular Black families with certain services, given that needs are not evenly distributed.
Are you referencing to this slide? We do break down the race ethnicity in our September P P C slides. So if you do want to look at a deeper look on the data, you could refer.
I would, and I, you know, I, it's really that general point that I want to make that we, that we can't assume that that need is evenly distributed. I mean, the data, you know, when we look at outcomes, the data simply don't support that. So being very careful that we don't imply we're doing an adequate job with populations because our participation in programs is equal, the the number we reach is is equal to the proportion in the population.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Taylor or Allen, sorry, for pointing that out. I did want to mention that the information that we shared at the P P at last month's P P C meeting, where we compared the percentages of children that we reached from different racial and ethnic groups to the county overall, was for commissioner purposes only. We don't submit that data to First Five California at all. All that we submit to them are the the numbers of kids that we reach from each racial and ethnic group through our investments. We don't do that comparison to the county. That was just just some additional contextual data that we were providing based on a question that came up in last year's commission meeting when we were sharing similar information. So I understand your concern about not wanting to paint a picture that isn't accurate. So just wanted to clarify that we won't be reporting that data. And we've also noted your, your point that that data on race ethnicity doesn't take into account need, it doesn't represent need, and so we wouldn't want to send that message. And we'll be looking at how, you know, is there better data out there that does represent need that we can use to more appropriately make comparisons between who we're reaching and who's represented through our investments?
I think that's a great discussion to have. Thanks.
So just to clarify, are you saying that the notion of underrepresentation is not actually a part of the report that we make to First Five, but rather an assessment that we made internally?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay, so I think a further discussion for us, but not really affecting this particular report and our consideration of it. So good question, Deborah. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, Kim, did you want to say anything about this report and the way it's, you know, generally used? Not to surprise you, but I just wasn't sure if there was anything you wanted to add. I think the the report was complete, but I'm not certain the context for us about how they use it. I think.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I, you know, in the interest of keeping it a high level as Hari did, we didn't make the the typical comments we've made in the past about how, or we haven't gone into the same level of depth about how this annual report follows a very First Five California specified format, and it hasn't changed in twenty years. And we all have changed a lot, and First Five California has changed a lot. So more and more first fives, including First Five California, are really orienting their strategic focus to systems change, and yet the data being collected doesn't necessarily align with those with that approach. So under new leadership of First Five California, there is an openness to making changes. Apparently, they thought the first fives didn't want to ever change it, and the first five thought First Five California never wanted to change it. So the good news is we're working through those issues, and I'm confident if not next year and in a subsequent year, there'll be a different format and approach that will yield an annual report that is much more aligned with the actual work and more strategically useful.
Okay, I think that's very helpful because I, you know, I just sort of have a nagging feeling that sometimes we think, well, I reported my data. And, you know, we're so we're data-driven, and yet if the data doesn't reflect the things that we're newly or somewhat newly interested in thinking about. So I think that, you know, that's good to know and good, I think, for the next executive director and, you know, the entire commission to remember, not that we're running First Five California, but simply to think, because in every one of our different activities and our workplaces, I think we are also both struggling with and somewhat, I think, successfully adjusting to exactly what data is necessary to show us what we want to see. And as we shift more toward more and more toward outcome assessment, you know, it's as we discussed three or four years ago, they, when you want to see how you're affecting people's mental health, just reporting that they had five appointments with a therapist was not necessarily as helpful as it could be. So I think this is good, and if there's no further discussion about this, this report, I believe we would need a motion to, let's see, do we approve it? What is the language counsel that we need to use in our motion?
I believe it could be a motion to approve the report and approve some middle of the report to First Five California.
Okay, good. So would someone make that motion?
I so moved. This is Ramalis Taylor.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Is there a second?
I'll second it. This is Judy.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll on this item.
And before I call roll, I did want to confirm that there are no public comments on this item.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry I forgot to ask. Thanks very much, Linda.
You're welcome. Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Deborah Allen?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yeah.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Ramos?
Yes.
Ramalis Taylor?
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez?
Yes.
And Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you. The next item will be a bit of a long presentation. Welcome, however. We would normally take a break now, and generally the break would be to allow our court reporter keeping our minutes to have a break, so I think that's a good thing.
Actually, Sheila, it's hard to interrupt. We've got one more agenda item before that that break.
Oh, you're right. So sorry.
Yeah.
Peter, I'm sorry. You must have wondered what happened to that.
Yep, no, we've got one short item before the break.
Right, and that item started with one number but no title at the bottom of one page, and I forgot to go to the other page. Okay, the next item then before the break would be an information item, not an action item, about proposed amendments to our bylaws. So Peter, are you going to present or is counsel going to present?
I'm just going to kick it off and hand it right over to our chief counsel.
All right, great. Go ahead.
And I am very relieved to know that this doesn't have to be a long item. We are hoping it's very short, so I know we can go to the break in the more substantive pieces. So as Commissioners see in the materials before you, we are coming to the full board for information about proposed updates to our bylaws and our governance guidelines. As Commissioners will recall, at the end of last year, we noted that a lot of the work we were doing to implement the new strategic plan and to update things like our procurement policy and respond for the pandemic, highlighted a couple of opportunities for us to update our bylaws and our governance guidelines, which are our foundational documents. The majority of these changes are minor but important. For example, our bylaws and governance guidelines refer to our strategic plan by years, the twenty fifteen to twenty twenty strategic plan. And we are obviously no longer in that timeframe in our proposing changes to refer to our adopted strategic plan regardless of the timeframe, because we don't want to keep making these changes every time we update our strategic plan. So that's the theme and spirit behind these amendments. We're not looking for massive policy shifts. We're trying to clean up the bylaws and governance guidelines so they are accurate and aligned with the practices we have as an organization today. We have presented these to our executive committee, embedded them, and so they're coming to you for your information. And so that I'll hand it over to Sarita, just to talk through a couple of more pieces and then open it for any questions. The intention is that we'll bring this to the board for action in November. Sarita?
Thanks, Peter. And so, yes, Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to highlight two, two proposed amendments that we have in the memo before you, and you see all of the proposed amendments summarized on pages two through four of your memo. But just to touch on two, one would is with respect to the Program and Planning Committee, and that's a proposed change to that particular committee to allow the Chair of the Board to appoint either a voting member, which is currently how that is set up, as the committee chair, but also potentially an ex officio representative of the commission as the committee chair. So staff is recommending that change mainly due to a recognition that the commissioners, you not only have your duties to First Five L A, but recognizing you also have other external commitments as well, and just allowing for the Chair to have more flexibility in terms of commissioners who may be available to chair that committee, whether they're voting members of the commission or ex officio members. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then the second, kind of a somewhat byproduct of that proposed change, that would also mean that for purposes of the executive committee, which is traditionally comprised of voting members of the board, should the Chair in the future opt to appoint an ex officio representative to the P P C, then that would just mean that an ex officio, that Chair of the P P C, the ex officio representative, would also be a member of the executive committee, which would be a shift from the current composition of the executive committee. So I just wanted to point out those two changes. I think Peter highlighted the other changes that again are more in alignment with the changes to the strategic plan, the the updates to our procurement policies. And so to the extent Chair or any commissioners have questions, Peter and I are available to answer those.
This is Dr. Hager. I have one question. In light of the fact that we are entering into a phase of choosing new directors and getting a new Chair, I think, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be smarter to leave any significant amendments to the bylaws until that has been accomplished?
Well, I think that certainly, if that's the will. Well, I think that certainly, if that's the will of the, the Board, we can certainly defer the discussion to the proposed amendments to that point. I think there was some, there was some hope in terms of the PPC Committee and making modifications to the composition of that committee or allowing for an ex officio to chair that committee, that that proposed amendment would actually give more flexibility to the executive director who will be coming in in the future in advance of that timeframe of when, of when the Chair selects committee members, which I believe begins at the beginning of the year. But Linda, you can correct me if that's wrong.
Confirming that that is correct. We do formally announce the committee assignments at the February Board meeting of each year.
I also think that the decision about whether an ex officio member could serve as Chair of a committee is significantly within the purview of the Commission as it's our committees, if you know what I mean, and our execs. So I don't think it necessarily would have to wait either for a new Board Chair or a new ED.
That's correct. The, the Board elects the leadership of committees or the, of the Board as a whole. And then the Board Chair can make those appointments for committees. And I think the opportunity here was just to clarify who can serve. So there's more flexibility for, and we're hoping to make these changes now just for a new Board Chair and a new executive director and new Board. Happy to revisit, but, but that was the intent here. And it's really about making sure that we have enough opportunities for ex officio and voting members alike to be able to bring their talents to the work.
Okay, any other comments or questions from Commission members?
Commissioner Taylor and then Martinez.
Okay, Ramalas.
My, my question really goes into, let's see, what is this page? I can't really, oh, page six of the guidelines. And it's also duplicated on page two of the guidance guidelines. And then the other one was the bylaws. It deals with the elimination. It says staff will provide to the Commission an annual update each spring on expiring grants and contracts. Why did we remove that? Telling us who is going away, who is staying or whatever with regards to contracts? Why was that eliminated?
So I'll let Kim and John weigh in from the historic perspective. But this was a process that was put in place with the adoption of the 2015-2020 strategic plan, when we had a large, large volume of commitments, contracts, dollars that we wanted to make sure we were giving line of sight as things were sunsetting to say, these are all the things that historically have been committed to and that are sunsetting. So everyone had that awareness. Now in this phase of where we are in the work, we don't have a large volume of these historic legacy investments on the books. We've been able to transition that. So all the contracts and agreements and dollars that we put out the door are approved up from, by the Commission with clear start dates and end dates. And through the executive director's report, we're providing updates on that work. And if we ever want to continue that work, we come back to the Board with an information item and an action item. So this, and this effort was put into place because we really wanted to make sure there was transparency as we were transitioning from a lot of our direct services work, our legacy work toward our systems change work. And now we're in a place where every time these things are approved, the Board sees it at least twice before they take action. And we're very clear with start dates and end dates. Kim and John, I'm not sure if there's anything else you would add to that.
No, I think that's right, Peter. The, the context was very, very different. It was, we actually didn't have clear, we had start dates, but when I began, we really didn't have end dates. There wasn't an expectation that contracts would come to an end. Indeed, there was an expectation that they would be extended for another year and another year and another year. And as we embarked on a clear strategic focus and more intentional financial discipline, the Board felt it was important and we totally agreed that we give more visibility to the actual ending expiration of contracts. So it, it, it's really a legacy. We can continue to do, we could do a reporting, but we're already doing it with the explicit start dates and end dates in all of our contracts that Peter spoke to.
Okay, Ramalas?
My issue is that we, we have a continual looking at sustainability. And as that goes forward, how that plays into the transition from year to year, especially with regards to contracts going out and how that's going to affect our budgeting going forward to more align our budget with our ability to continue programs or discontinue programs.
And Ramalas, that's what the long-term financial plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, is so critical.
Yes, it is. And, and as we go into the next year, that's going to be a credit that the Board understands what's going away and what's staying with regards to the plan. And programs are going to stay or go. So I, it may not be in continuation of what you did before, but it's important that we align it with the budget process as we move forward.
Absolutely, Commissioner Taylor. And just one other call out about something that is in the governance guidelines. Every time we bring to the Board a recommendation for a contract, we do have to address sustainability or intentions around funding. So when the Board initially adopted the governance guidelines that included the expiring initiatives, they also put that requirement in. And so at the time, back in 2014, 2015, none of that existed, which is why we had to give line of sight to the Board. Look at all these things that we have said yes to and how we're trying to bring it into greater alignment. Now that all contracts have to include that, how are we going to sustain this? What are we trying to commit to over multiple years? Now that that's part of the approval process and we also have an information before action process so that there's more transparency, we feel that we no longer need a separate Board presentation highlighting information that's already going to the Board. And similarly with the long-term financial plan, wanting to make sure that that is more crisp and solid as we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette.
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to just agree with Dr. Hager. It does feel like it's since we're so close to electing an ED and potentially a new Board Chair, it does feel more appropriate to wait on changes to the leadership of the Board and the makeup until we have a new ED and Board Chair. So I just wanted to agree with Dr. Hager.
Great. So what I'm hearing as feedback is that we would potentially remove the reference to the ex officio component of this work that Commissioner Hager and Martinez, you'd feel more comfortable with that. One change that we would like to still pursue, if Commissioners are comfortable, is the, we, right now, if the Board Chair is not able to chair a meeting, a committee chair, for example, it's not clear in our governance guidelines or bylaws that the Vice Chair could step in and chair that meeting. And we just want to make sure that that's clear because that was something we were running into or that a Commissioner alternate could step into that. Because as we know, many of our voting member Commissioners have very important county jobs. Their alternate maybe have to step in more often.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure that we are including that in the, the changes so that we have that flexibility for meetings to be able to be convened and continue.
That sounds right. Thank you, Peter. That sounds right, too.
So just to, just to recap, because I, I want to make sure we're, we're clear. This was an issue we discussed with the Executive Committee and appreciated the positive feedback there. That this is, is it specifically around the committee? The, the providing the Chair the flexibility to name an ex officio member as Chair of PPC? Is that, is that Astrid, what I'm hearing that you and Yvette are now speaking to?
Whether it's PPC or any, any, I just think right now, making changes to the bylaws is not appropriate in light of all the other work that we're doing. And that's, that's whether it's PPC or, you know.
So it's changes, changes to the bylaws across the Board are specific to governance by ex officio members?
Well, I think we have, we want to see, you know, I think any changes to bylaws I need to be, I think need to be scrutinized carefully right now in light of the changes that are coming. And as far as the committees, obviously, all of us have the options of being gone and when committees or other things happen, whether it's a Commission meeting or, or, or another type of meeting. And I think obviously, I think most of us would agree that having someone step in would be appropriate. But I, I think we need to carefully look at a major change in the, in the, in the bylaws at this point. And I'm just asking to put it off until we've reached a selection process probably in, in, in December or January.
And I was thinking more about the governance piece.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, Commissioner Hager, can I, sorry, sorry to be very specific because there's a volume of changes that I would characterize as ministerial. So for example, the reference to the strategic plan being outdated 2015 to 2020, the changes to the accuracy, for example, of the long-term financial plan, where it says we must have a five-year plan. With the Board's concurrence, we've adopted a 10-year plan because we want to be more thoughtful in the work and we want to make sure that we can continue to do the 10-year plan instead of five-year plan. So those are the bulk of the changes. What Sarita called out about the ex officio changes are the ones that we considered more substantive, which is why we highlighted it with the Executive Committee in here. So if we were to remove that change specifically, because it is the more substantive one.
Could I, could I just intervene here for a minute?
Yeah, please.
Uh, this is a democracy and we really appreciate feedback. But the fact that two members of a Board have a problem with an issue is not sufficient to remove it from our consideration. I think it's feedback. First of all, we're not voting on this today. It's coming back to us in the November meeting. And I think I'd like to encourage a little more robust discussion before you agree. I appreciate when Commission members raise a question about it. But speaking as the person who's been the Chair of the Board for eight years, I'll want to weigh in at the end about what it means to the, to coming in and having rules in place. But anyone else who, but I wouldn't start dropping off pieces of this because of Board feedback. I would consider it Commissioner feedback because the vote will be in our next meeting, if I'm correct. And that gives us a little more time to perhaps consider these pieces. I will have something to say at the end, but I want to make sure.
Absolutely.
You know, Astrid and Yvette speak again if they wish to and other Commissioners get to talk as well. So Judy, do you see any other hands up?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't know if you call on yourself on these matters or if you, you know, if you had anything to say as the Head of Exec.
Well, I agree with, with you that it's coming back and that we should talk about it. I do not agree with putting it off in general because I think the new people should come in with clearer guidelines.
Well, I, my, my issue is that I always felt there was an unusual discrimination against certain of the members of this Commission who were ex officio in not allowing them really to chair a committee. And, you know, it, when I'm looking at appointing the Chairs of Committees, though I feel you're all incredibly talented, I felt sort of constrained because I could not consider the officio, the ex officio members to serve as a Chair of the Committee. And it seemed to me, I, I can't think of another word, a kind of a stupid distinction. So I don't really agree that we need to ask a brand-new Chair. And how do you feel about excluding ex officio members to chair a committee? Although, of course, you know, I'll hope to brief the new Chair so that they're up to speed. But I, I guess I, it, it's a, it's a question of whether a Board Chair, it's not a matter of the Board Chair's choice. I hope you understand. This is something that at the moment is not allowed under our bylaws. So it essentially constrained my choice of people to ask, to use their talent to chair a committee. And so I'm not certain, I, I, I understand Commission members who have, you know, a concern about something, but it, it seems a little automatic to me when this is actually to help a new Board Chair be able to utilize the talents of all the members of the Board. So maybe Astrid, you could say more, or Yvette, about your concern about why a new, I mean, ED's not going to have much to do with it. This is the appointment of Board Committees. Though the ED has suggested, but, you know, it's really up to us. So I'm not sure why you would want ex officio members to continue to be excluded from sharing committees. And I don't mean to say it as, you know, that kind of challenge, but to me, that's really all it was about.
Well, Sheila, I don't think it was, what I had to say wasn't about excluding ex officios or about process and about allowing the, the, basically the rules to stand the way they are until the leadership and is, since the leadership is on the brink of changing, allowing the debate to include them and what they wanted at that point rather than changing rules before they, just before they come on board. I have, I have no, I bear nothing more than wanting the, the non-voting members to have a more active role in what goes on in the Commission. I have nothing. I'm merely looking at process. And I would like to see them have a say in how they want to move forward and as well as, as the Commission. And Sheila, that was the only reason that I, I, I raised this issue. And it wasn't, it wasn't to constrain you or comment in any other way than, that I think I'd like, I'd like to have the new people coming in have feel that they have say over how they choose and who they choose, period. And that's the only reason I brought it up.
I, I, I never question your motive. And I, I'm sorry if it sounded like I did, since you can't see my face looking very friendly at you. But I think my impression is that this actually takes a constraint off of the Board Chair. Should we consider adopting it, you know, in a month? And it seemed like a kind of a good move, I mean, this particular one. But I think obviously, what I would, I guess, the thing that bothers me is taking it out of our consideration before we consider this next month. Because this was something that has come up more than once. But if, if that, tell me again really about, you know, this, this aspect.
I really, I mean, I don't, I just, it was about timing for me, really. And nothing more. So I, yeah.
Yes, I understand that, but. Okay, any other Commissioners want to weigh in? My preference would be not to remove it from consideration so that we can think about this over the next month rather than say, oh, sure, take it out right now. Or we can continue the item in November as a Board so that the, the consideration would be after, you know, new, new people are in place. I think e- either way, I think we, we need to have more of a discussion about what the majority would like or if the majority cares at all.
Sheila, you have Commissioner Taylor who has his hand up. And I'd also know that this issue did go to the Executive Committee for reporting out to the full Board. We also can bring it back to the Executive Committee for more discussion before. We, we also can bring it back to the executive committee for more discussion before returning to the board in November.
I, that would always be a good thing, although the executive committee sounds to me like has their hands full with a lot of other stuff.
They, they do and, and uh, they, they do and um, I, I, I'm clearly hearing some um, further reflections from members of the executive committee that might be worth um, deploying a little bit of time to better understand. Again, Commissioner Taylor has his hand up.
Then let us call on Commissioner Taylor.
Uh, Peter, it's my understanding that uh, the ex officio member is a voting member that is a part of the board, right? No?
Ex officio members are members of the board who do not vote, but do represent particular areas as govern, as determined by the board of supervisors when creating uh, the first-time commissions.
Well, the way I look at it is because uh, each year, uh, there's a rotation among the county departments. Uh, and things like that, that make them uh, part of the board, right? And they vote.
Those are not the ex officio members.
Oh, okay, that's what I was trying to get the clarification.
Peter, would you, maybe you could um, tell us or some members themselves could tell us.
Yeah, sir, exactly. We have some ex officio members here right now. Sarita, can you um, remind the board of the appointments that are uh, ex officio, please?
Sure, of course, and it was, um, it's outlined in the, the memo to the board as well on that section where we talk about the change to the um, P P C. But so basically, when the, when the county established the commission, um, there are certain requirements in the county code related to first five L A and how the commission is to be composed. And so there's a section in the county code, section three point seven five, seven two point oh five oh, that specifically talks about um, saying that the commission should include four ex officio non-voting representatives. And the, the premise of that paragraph, it, it talks about the fact that these ex officio members have an expertise in their particular fields and the county recognizes the importance of those individuals bringing that expertise to this body. Um, so those um, those organizations that the ex officios represent are the Commission for Children and Families, the Interagency Council on Child Abuse and Neglect, the Los Angeles County Policy Roundtable for Childcare and Development, and Laco, Los Angeles County Office of Education. I, I, I'll say on the fourth one, there's, there's kind of a mixture, but yes. That's what's called out in the county code in terms of who the ex officio non-voting members are.
And Sarita, if I may add, um, Laco, um, at our last, um, back in two thousand thirteen, Supervisor Ridley Thomas did put a motion forth and that was the rotation of the department heads. And so every single year, there is a rotation of voting rights amongst D P H, D M H, Laco, and D C F S.
So they are voting members?
Well, yeah.
That are appointed as rotating, right?
Not, not, not all of them.
Not all of them, but.
They rotate, they rotate in and out as voting members, so that they got all the, not all the departments have a vote.
Right, that is correct.
And then I, I think we need to be clear about that in the presentation of this change. Because uh, the confusion for me was I assumed that the person that it would be appointed would be the ex officio member as now a voting member of the board that could uh, lead the, the chair of the P P P. And, and that's my assumption based on how I was reading the document. So that's why I'm asking for the clarification.
Well, let us, how about we let this go back to exec? Uh, because some of the members who've raised uh, an issue with it are on exec and that would give it a good airing.
Okay.
And then it come back in November and if we're still not comfortable, we'll drop that part out. Or we'll put the whole thing over to when there's new, you know, whatever. I think um, uh, because I do want to get to the strategic plan review because it's a public hearing and we have to have it. Um, if that's okay with the board, let's go back and let exec look at this one more time. Bring us their recommendations in November and go from there. Is that okay with everybody? If you're not, I can't see you.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Uh, thank you, Peter and Sarita. Uh, let us take, I think in the interest of time, a seven-minute break. That'll make it three ten when we come back and uh, I will see you then.
And Madam Chair, for the record, if I may confirm, there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you, I'm so sorry, just trying to get to the break. Um, and yes, thank you very much. So uh, the action on that is to return it to exec and uh, we'll see you at three ten. Okay, the Board of Commissioners is called back into session. Hope everybody had a nice seven-minute break. Uh, we are moving to the final item on our agenda. Uh, so um, we will now begin the public hearing for the annual review of our strategic plan. Uh, so first we will have a presentation. Uh, and then turn to our commissioners for questions and comments and then have public comment. Um, so let us, I think, turn to you, Antoinette, to begin uh, this presentation.
Yes, thank you. And um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, good afternoon, commissioners, and to my colleagues and members of the public on participating on this call. Um, I'd actually like to begin today's presentation by honoring two men who passed away. So the first is my dad, who passed away in November of twenty twenty and today is actually his birthday. So I'm sitting here today because of him. Um, the second man I'd like to honor is Dr. Christopher Hickey, who was a community leader participating in Best Start Watts Woolbrook. Um, and Dr. Hickey recently passed away. And so, you know, both of these men were men of purpose, men who sought to use their resources for the benefit of others. Men of excellence who just were not content with the status quo. Um, they didn't settle for the way things are. Um, and so when I think about these two things, I think about words like hard work, continuous improvement, love for family and community, and that's what I was thinking about um, as I was preparing for today's presentation. Because in many ways, the conversation that we've been having with the board are grounded in a similar purpose to use our resources, which is our time, our talent, our positioning, our knowledge, our funding, to use those resources to change systems so that they actually work for families. The refinements that we're making to our strategic plan are about leaning into systems change more powerfully and not settling for the way things are for families. We know that for far too many families, the system, uh, the systems are just not working. We know from the lived experience of community members as well as our own staff that family experience systems that are not accessible. And when they are able to access them, the systems are punitive, misaligned, inequitable with dup- duplicative processes, inadequate and unstable funding. All of this creates insurmountable barriers for families with young children who are simply trying to survive. And we don't want families to just simply survive. We actually want them to thrive and for their children to reach their full developmental potential during that critical window of prenatal to five. And we believe that first five L A is uniquely positioned to do something about this in collaboration with others in the county and throughout the state um, who are also working to change systems at the county, state, and federal levels. Now, we've been bringing a lot of information to the board over the past several months and today's presentation is, is no different. But underneath all of the PowerPoint presentations and memos and talking points is a deep passion and love for the well-being of our county's youngest children. And that's why we're taking this work and we take systems change work so seriously. And that means we have to make decisions about where we're going to focus, what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. And refining our strategic plan is a starting place. And even if we didn't have a formal refinement process embedded in our strategic plan, which we do, but even if we didn't, we would still be working to address the question of what are we holding ourselves accountable for. We would still seek to focus and narrow our work. And that's because we've been listening to our partners and communities about the experiences of families and what matters most to families. And we continue to learn from our work about what it takes to do systems change, which is a long-term commitment in a rapidly changing context. We know it's messy work that isn't prescriptive or linear. We know that it's work that requires us to be adaptive and flexible and responsive and to live our values more deeply across all of our functions and areas of work. And this means that we must regularly evaluate and learn from and refine our work for greater impact. So through this, this strategic plan refinement, we are boldly asserting first five L A's intention and expectation for systems most critical to the well-being of families and the development of their children prenatally and throughout the first five years of their life. Now, we have um, over an hour for this presentation. Um, and we're going to pace ourselves accordingly because we want to make sure that commissioners and the public really understand the proposed refinements that we, that will be brought to the board for approval in November. So with those opening remarks, um, I just want to share that we have three objectives for today's presentation. The first is conducting a public hearing on the strategic plan. Um, Prop ten requires that we conduct a public hearing on the strategic plan annually and whenever there is a change to the plan. So part of this presentation is about this uh, conducting a public hearing. Then we will systematically review the initial refinements to the strategic plan as a preview of what we will bring to the board um, in November for approval. And that includes our North Star, which we have had conversations with the board um, about in July and September board meetings, as well as a systems change goal and long-term systems outcomes, which we shared during the program and planning committee um, meeting um, uh, last month. Um, and um, so, and we understand that all of these different conversations that we've been having with the board thus far has been at a very conceptual level and we heard about this. We heard that our long-term systems outcomes, for example, were vague. We heard that during the September P P C. So we're going to share some initial thinking on short-term systems outcomes and public systems to provide greater clarity and concreteness to the long-term systems outcomes. Now, the draft short-term outcomes and public systems also provide beginning insight on how we will narrow and focus our work. Now, this is our uh, strategic plan on a single page. Um, and though this graphic sought to simplify communication of what we were trying to achieve and the pathway to get there, we learned from partners and from community members and staff that there's still insufficient clarity on what we're trying to accomplish, why and how. Now, I recall um, when the board approved the strategic plan and I had a conversation with um, the regional, the Best Start Regional Network grantees and I was sharing this slide and talking about um, first five L A's um, affirmation that we would continue to do systems change. And the response back was something like, well, wait a minute, this doesn't look like systems change. It isn't clear how this pathway to systems change is systems change. And that we were confusing communities who are really starting to embrace the importance of systems change and their role in it. So we've got some work to do. If we're asserting that systems change If we're asserting that systems change is the thing that we must do in order to achieve results, as Kim says, at a scale worthy of our Yale County's children and families, then we have to be really clear in how we're actually going to achieve those systems changes. And as we look at this graphic, it's also not clear on exactly where First Five L.A. stands on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now, where we stand and what our, what our voice is around justice and belonging are critical because we've said that the problem that we want to solve is that of systemic bias and inequities within public systems. So with all of that in mind, we launched our first review and refinement cycle of the strategic plan. We launched that, that refinement cycle in July. And this is enabling us to adapt now based on what we've been learning around implementation and changes to our external context. Now, our review and refinement cycle consists of two phases. The first phase is focused on this first part of the pathway, the North Star, results for children and families, and the long-term systems outcomes. And we're going to walk through exactly what, you know, what we're asking the board to consider and approve in November. The second phase is on the second part of this pathway around our systems change approaches, strategic priorities, our values and investment guidelines. And throughout all of these conversations, we want to make it clear that we don't have all the answers and we cannot do this work alone, nor do we want to do this work alone. So we are going to engage our partners and communities during the phase two to inform our refinements. And by the end of the 2023 calendar year, we will have completed the first three-year review and refinement cycle for the 2020-2028 strategic plan. Now, Sharna, who's my, one of my talented colleagues, has been thinking a lot about this along with us. And so she is going to walk us through the first phase of refinements to the strategic plan for which we will seek a board approval in November. Sharna?
Thank you, Antoinette. Especially thank you for grounding our conversation in connection and purpose as we do bring our full hearts to our work, especially as we are about to dive into some really dense and conceptual changes. Okay, so this is the visual highlight of the current elements of our strategic plan. As Antoinette just shared, phase one of our review and refinement cycle that we are in now includes refining the elements highlighted, our North Star, the four results for children and families, and the long-term system outcomes. So I'm going to walk us through those items. So why are we undertaking these refinements? It's not just that we are timed as an organization, as Antoinette just said, of doing regular refinements, but we really do need strategic plan and a set of long-term outcomes to make sure that systems work for families. We want families to experience seamless support and to be able to build resilience. We want children, families, and communities to experience safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments in the earliest, most influential years. But currently, systems are largely designed or oriented to do the opposite, either a wait-and-see or eligibility that can be focused on accumulating deficits, which misses that critical and unique window we know is so important and special, especially in the prenatal to three-years-old and through five. So our current 2020-2028 strategic plan is a big shift from our past strategic directions to systems change, and it is still interpreted as broad. A lot could fit under that North Star. And it's not specific enough to achieving the systems changes we want to see and that, most importantly, will strengthen families in Los Angeles County. So we are reframing and refining based on learnings that we have been living and building so far in the strategic plan and saying that systems change is our specific and relentless focus. Throughout our conversation, we're hoping that you keep this central point of mind, central point, friend of mind. First Five L.A. must work to change systems so that they actually work for families and support the optimal development of children. With that as context setting, our refined approach starts with reframing First Five L.A.'s North Star. The North Star is our overarching vision for children. And under our current strategic plan, the North Star has focused on school readiness, which is looking at the endpoint of the zero-to-five age range, and as such, misses the orientation to the earliest moments and the prioritization of this truly special window where we can profoundly support optimal development. So as we developed out our whole-child, whole-family framework through the last year, we started with refining our North Star to focus on the unique role and influence of child development in our vision for children. So as we've been presenting and discussing since the spring, we have received important support and input from Commissioners already and use that to build out the rest of our refinement framework to follow. So our reframed North Star reads, "Every child in Los Angeles County will reach their full developmental potential throughout the critical years of prenatal to age five." So now that we have a proposal for this new North Star, we need to ask, how do we actually achieve that North Star? And what changes in our orientation to aim our telescope and align our navigation there? We have, we are proposing to operationalize this North Star with an overarching systems change goal. And as I was mentioning earlier, systems change will be our relentless focus. So we have developed an overall systems change goal to put that focus into practice. So the next key refinement to our strategic plan is to replace the current four results of children with what we are calling an overall overarching systems change goal. The rationale for this is because our focus, our actual work, and therefore our accountability, is about systems change to support children's full developmental potential and improve outcomes through systems change. Individual measures, population level, or otherwise cannot fully be understood or fully realized in isolation. Rather, we must understand and realize them within the context of a broader, ongoing evaluation of the whole. So we're focused on a vision of transformed systems that center the perspective and experiences of families. Our theory of change in this work and what we're bringing today is grounded in the hypothesis that changing systems is how First Five L.A. can, at a scale worthy of L.A. County's children, advance longer-term population level outcomes for families and children. The evaluation and measures of progress of our underlying theory of change that we are accountable for should and will focus on systems that are the focus of the work of First Five L.A. And this means initially focusing on more immediate systems change. These system outcomes will then help incrementally build towards broader systems transformation. And the timeframe for achieving sufficient systems change or systems changes that can actually result in the change to population outcomes for children is really long. It's likely decades away. And that our systems change goals in this theory of change are aimed to shift public systems to improve those conditions that LAIC families experience over time, but our accountability is at shifting public systems to eliminate disparities at the earliest moments. So with that, the, the other component or the next refinement that we're seeking is therefore to clarify and reinforce our distinct focus on systems change. Here on the slide, we wanted to provide a visual kind of demonstrating our evolution from the current strategic plan, the 2020-2028 strategic plan, which does not have an explicit, specific goal of changing systems, to where we are now with this proposed overarching systems change goal. The new North Star that we are recommending within this refinement effort is about our overarching vision for children. And now we want to speak more to the systems change goal, which is our ultimate vision for systems. Under the current strategic plan, the four results for families really focused on individual and population level trends, which, while important, are not systems change outcomes. So although First Five L.A. is and will remain a systems change organization, our current strategic plan actually doesn't have that explicit systems change goal, although it's implied or embedded throughout our plan. So this is a significant gap that we need to address in order to truly pursue these important changes to systems. This is ultimately why we are recommending an overarching systems change goal to clarify our focus on systems change and implement that vision. So articulating our systems change goal is important also to test and refine our, the First Five L.A.-focused strategies aimed at our contribution to the newly-refined North Star. And even with that refinement, we want to be clear about what this means we do to contribute to achieving our reframed North Star and reinforcing our focus and our role in contribution to focus on and point to public systems change. That in itself is a narrowing and a focus. After receiving really insightful and important feedback from you all, we have rethought and revised our approach to emphasize the alignment with our unique opportunity to point to the earliest moments in a more action-oriented understanding and to really focus on uplifting justice and belonging as critical components. So with that context in mind, the proposed overarching systems change goal reads, "Public systems most critical to children's development prenatal to five, advanced belonging and justice for communities which experience significant inequities." So next, I want to speak to our newly-refined long-term system outcomes. So far, we've discussed our refined focus on changing systems to promote optimal child development and along with that, a new North Star and a specific overarching systems change goal. But how do we measure progress towards achieving that goal? To accomplish that, we have refined and re-envisioned a set of long-term system outcomes. Specifically, these long-term system outcomes are connected to the overarching systems change goal, and they provide the characteristics that, when achieved, will help us know that we are achieving our overall systems change goal that I just discussed. Our current strategic plan has long-term system outcomes, or LTSOs, as we affectionately call them, that are largely aspirational and frame system outcomes in much more service-delivery terms. And we know we want families to have less interventions in their lives and that we want to be more upstream to bolster strengths within children, caregivers, and communities, and to eliminate the need for higher-intensity interventions down the line. So acknowledging it's not all service delivery, that systems change is much deeper than that. And we know that community and family voice is too often an afterthought and not always well-centered within system design or choices available to children, families, and communities. So again, here, we want to visually demonstrate the evolution of our thinking for the past several months, informed by your feedback and insights. We are proposing four overarching outcomes as characteristics that if and when we change systems, will be the feature, function, and design. So this is how we will know systems are changing to work for families and with young children. They will be accessible, equitable, share power, and feature sufficient funding. These are really key to our narrowing and focus because they are explicitly aimed at systems. They're more measurable, and this is a really dense slide. So I want to take some time and walk through each specifically. Accessible being, public systems are connected, aligned, and seamless, enabling and facilitating not just access, but easy, seamless access for families. This is aimed at continuity, that public systems are aligned both across and within systems, enabling and facilitating easy access and easy navigation for families. Intuitive might be another word, but Becca will get into that a little bit later. Next one would be equitable, that public systems eliminate systemic biases in mindsets, policies, and practices and are responsive to the needs, experiences, and assets of families and communities. So in practice, this means that we want public systems to be designed to ensure full and equitable utilization of supports and services by families and that promoting and facilitating connectivity between families and communities with appropriate and meaningful supports is critical. And then moving to the design parts of this is about power sharing, that communities and public systems share power in the development, implementation, and improvement of policies and practices that impact children and caregivers. That public systems are designed to ensure what families and communities want and need, when they want and need it, where they want and need it, at the level of support most supportive is there. That we heard clearly from Commissioners and partners and staff that public systems need to have structures and processes that institutionalize meaningful community participation. And changing systems is, in this manner, is a key outcome First Five L.A. will be pursuing. And also the importance of power sharing, that communities gain the power and influence and also that systems are held accountable for equitable strategies, resources, and outcomes. And then financing. This refers to ensuring that financing mechanisms of public systems are sufficient and incentivize a whole-child, whole-family prevention-oriented approach, which includes services, supports, or a range of benefits. We heard from Commissioners that financing mechanisms are more than just increased investment, which we know is sorely needed, but also looking at sufficiency and equity and stability. That mechanisms are truly tied also to oversight and accountability to facilitate timely connections because we know there is urgency and it's a short window. So overall, these four longer-term system change goals are descriptions of the characteristics we want in systems to work and support in the earliest moments. Achieving them is how we know we are well on our way to ensuring our overarching systems change goal and North Star and ultimately ensuring systems promote optimal child development. These longer-term system outcomes are still big and aspirational even as we are making them more explicit and operational than we have been. And acknowledge and understand that achieving them will take longer than this strategic plan and also will take more contributions than First Five's L.A. alone in our impact and in our strategies. So next, Becca will preview some early thinking. And in future meetings, we will bring to Commissioners more discrete and tactical short-term outcomes that will support achievement of these longer-term system outcomes. But for now, we're really interested in hearing how you're thinking about this change in overall strategic direction. That is, it is largely conceptual, but it's an important orientation and focus to our work to be more explicit than we have been. So to take it out of the words and into a little bit more conceptualization, this visual is meant to bolster the interrelationships from the four longer-term system outcomes and between and that they move together as interlocking, interconnecting, interdependent, as a seamless, supportive experience for families. There's not an order to these longer system outcomes. They're loosely coupled together in kind of a pattern, but they're meant not to show any like order of importance or sequencing. They are all equally important, and we will relentlessly pursue each in concert. So once, and also acknowledging that only when we achieve all four together will systems truly be working and functioning and designed for young children and families. Okay, I know this has been a lot of information already, but we are really excited about this as a narrowed and more strategic focus explicitly on systems and that this vision for systems transformations is articulated in a way that's more operational and specific. But I want to take a second here to pause and take a breath, but really to look at all of these pieces together and how they fit into our strategic vision. So this framework and refinements are also nonlinear. It's hard to represent that visually without it being too messy, so please know it's not linear. It's more cumulative, just like child development is cumulative. In summary, the action items that we are bringing to you next month, these pieces go together and are synergistically designed. Becca, of course, will go into the messier connections that loosely couple the longer term with shorter term outcomes and give more clarity to what this means in our shifting work and focus on strategy development into 2024. But to summarize the refinements that we are seeking board approval for in our next board meeting in November are, first, the reframed North Star. now focused on optimal child development with our special population for children ages prenatal to five years old, and acknowledging this extremely important window for influence and strengthening. And second, eliminating the current strategic plans for results for families, and in their place, adopting an overarching systems change goal to clarify our vision for systems transformation to contribute to and achieve our North Star. And third, then the interconnected and reinforcing long term system outcomes that envision the characteristics we seek within systems, so that public systems do prioritize the most critical window of child development in prenatal to five to reduce and eliminate disparities that often exist before birth. Okay, that was a lot of content and context, so I'm going to take a break and uh take a breath and open it up. Now, we really want to hear from you and pause on the action items for our next meeting before we introduce some of the deeper, messier connections that shorter term shifts applied to our examples of work will be or could be. Um, so questions to you in this uh visionary, visioning space. Um, do the proposed refinements we've just reviewed reflect commissioner input and guidance on the North Star, the overarching systems change goal, the long term systems change outcomes? And what further questions, considerations, or inputs should staff be considering prior um to requesting board approval in November?
Okay, the question to you or any other question you want to answer uh or comment on or ask your own questions. Um, Judy, do you see any hands raised?
Uh, yes, Yvette.
Thank you so much. I thought it was really great and easy to follow. I love the wheels change. Um, that's a really great way to bring it to life. Can you comment a little bit more or elaborate on what you mean by the power sharing? And that's for you, Sharna.
I was looking at other members of our content team if they wanted to jump in. But I think um power sharing has some attached or contributory shorter outcomes that Becca will dive into a little bit that build towards what that means. But one of the key features or characteristics we've thought a lot about of when and if systems truly prioritize the earliest moments and built strengths and resilience in families and in communities, it would be in the design and function of how and where and what communities and families want. And to do that, there ha- there can't be a prescription and a one directional piece. That systems need to be accountable for equitable resources and and design, but that it's not up to just communities to hold them accountable, that community voice and community, what is realistic and what communities would actually use is a driving power within and a driving voice within community um within system design. So really thinking about that partnership and capacity building that is so important to realism if this were to work well. Um, and that requires a a bidirectional power sharing, but also a real capacity building um and voice from communities, which include families and children as well. I don't know if that was a satisfying answer if Antoinette wants to jump in.
Thank you.
Yeah, so um just to sort of make it a little bit more concrete. Um, in all of our years of doing work in Best Start, it's been about not doing things on behalf of communities, but doing things with communities. Um, I think about, for example, the work that's happening in the Antelope Valley, um, where it's D C F S and D M H, and um there are um Best Start community leaders and nonprofit organizations, and they are co-creating, you know, co-visioning what to um, what kind of Antelope Valley do we want? Um, and how do we support our kids? And that communities are at that table, families are at that table, also um contributing to what that looks like. So when we talk about power sharing, um, we know we've had, we have um systems who and and systems leaders and and people who work within systems that might have good intentions, but you got to have the people at the table co-creating and and um ensuring that what is created is actually going to work for families. So if we want systems to work better for families, only families have that experience and know how to best do that. And so um our um conceptualization of power sharing is that um sort of co-ownership, co-creation um around the implementation and um also continuous improvement of different policies and practices to ensure that those barriers that families experience are um re- eliminated. Um, that the um, the way that families are able to navigate the systems and whether they experience dignity as they're doing that, um, that all of that is addressed, but it it can't happen unless at least our hypothesis, it can't happen effectively without community at the table um a- and a part of that process.
A part and partner of the process, like there is an equality there that we are really trying to promote and and centering it on experience, not just listening to and responding separately. There is a a centering that we want, want to direct.
That that's exactly right, Sharna. It isn't about surveys or focus groups, and then we take it back and then we decide it's really about them at the table. And um we, you know, we've, we've learned this um through Best Start, of course. Um, I know also with um E C E, the E C E team um has a a provider advisory group um that's working through, you know, the issues that providers face. So this is about being in partnership with, really collaborating um and sharing that power to um determine what's going to work best for families.
Does that answer your question, Yvette?
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, anybody else?
Romalis and then Deborah.
Hey, Romalis.
Okay, um, good work. And I just want to first say that that's very good work. But I think when we're looking at systems change, especially when you're dealing with bureaucracies, the problem is, is that the gap that you might miss because you keep talking about policy and practice, you're missing the word procedure. When you talk to community people, they get frustrated by the procedures created by these bureaucracies to attain services. So you have to look at them in that structure of policy, procedure, and then practice is what they do with the procedure. So you have to put this back in everywhere you talk about policy and practice. You have to put the word policy, procedure, and practice. Otherwise, you're going to miss a huge issue for the community, because I hear about it all the time. And their problem is, is that they, government takes the policy from what legislation says to do, and they create the policy, then they create a procedure to implement that policy, and then they go out and do it in a practice. But sometimes the procedure they created or the policy they created is not really required based on the legislation. It is something bureaucracies create for their own end to say they're doing everything right. And the in reality is they don't look at it again. So that's why the collaboration has to be in the voice, both of the organization and the community, to say, is this really necessary for a procedure that requires to do X, Y, Z, that the community may not have the capacity or the skill or the ability to do based on where they are dealing with it? So I'm just saying, uh, you have to put the word procedure in these two places, especially under equability and under the power sharing. You have to put it in any time you use those words of policy and practice, you need to in-integrate the word procedure. If you don't, I think you're going to miss a great shot in your process of what you're proposing, just a suggestion.
I think that's certainly our intention, and we can clarify the language so it's clear that that is our intention.
Thank you. Thank you. Who was, who was next?
I am.
Deborah.
Um, well, first, I just have to say, I think that's a great point. And I think you look at something like food stamps or virtually any entitlement program we have, and um it's fascinating how much effort goes into the prevention of fraud and how little goes into, but no state ever gets sanctioned for failure to enroll people. You only get sanctioned for enrolling people who are not eligible, and that's such, we take that so for granted in all of our entitlement mindsets. And I think that idea of saying, you know, process matters is really a way of challenging those kinds of assumptions. Um, let's start holding states accountable and counties accountable for failing to take, help people take advantage of services rather than uh uh allowing in those who are not eligible. Uh, that brings me to the point that I originally wanted to make before I heard that great point. Um, which is that I think, I think it's, it's really important to emphasize that this is not simply about sort of one on one services. Um, but that, that there needs to be some sort of statement here framing this, this. I think the approach, the shift, I think, is great, and I appreciate it. But I think there's a further step of saying there are some basic necessities, um, you know, back to Maslow, that that every child needs, and that, that part of advocacy has to be more than than um, you know, sort of rethinking the services we have, but assuring that getting a house, getting adequate food doesn't require services, that those are things families can do without, you know, without special supports. And and some way of framing that we need to be a society that, you know, I, I mean, I don't think there's a thing that first five and the Department of Public Health and all of our allies can do that's going to overcome if, for example, there's a full out assault on federal Medicaid or on food stamps, or, you know, on any of the other fundamental programs that stingy as they are, keep people going currently. And I think we have to recognize that part of all of our jobs as child advocates has to be ensuring that that fundamental safety net is protected and improved as we go forward, and then all these other things come into play about how services are delivered and, you know, how we help people get to those service, those, those resources. Um, and how we deliver other kinds of services that assist families who, you know, face long term hardships. Um, but but I, I'd like to see that point made somewhere in there in framing.
Um, I think one of the underlying pieces in this, and Becca will dive into this a little bit more too, is we've really thought a lot about which public systems are the closest to impact on child development. And it, basic needs and economic security undergirds any ability to have and experience a safe, stable nurturing relationship and environment for the child, for the family, or for communities to experience and provide. And we really see that as fundamentally um the closest to, to that. And Becca will dive into that more, but really appreciate your point that articulating that within our long term system values and our vision for families. Family stability is right there, and I, I so appreciate the full utilization point, and um we will definitely think more. Thank you.
Okay, we have Astrid and then Jacqueline.
Okay, so I was going to say exactly what Deborah said, but I'll take it a step further and say, um, as someone who works where the rubber meets the road, I think when you actually deal with the individual family, other number one question is, how are you going to help me? And my family and idea of service is critically important as, as it's woven into policy and and other uh active uh, you know, bureaucratic types of service delivery, but it is really an individual child and family and the idea of service. And so I, I'm, I really wanted to just emphasize that uh the, it is in how we translate this into a direct help of the family that makes a difference rather than just um coming up with, with uh, with what we think the bureaucracy or entitlement should look like. That's, that's a, but Deborah, I agree with you absolutely.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
Jacqueline. You need to unmute, Jacqueline.
Oh, thanks, Judy. Um, like everyone else, I really, really love the direction we're going in now and the way we're conceptualizing our role and our unique kind of contribution in this particular space. Um, I, I've been concerned about the data that would track uh our previous difficulties tracking our results areas and data that would track um our current efforts because, you know, just looking at how many people receive certain services and whether they say they like it or not does not really get you very far. Um, it, it, I think this is actually more measurable, which is uh wonderful. And I just also want to comment that having been working for the last year and a half or so with the Thriving Family Safer Children Group, um, and we've done all these visioning sessions, et cetera. It just becomes so clear that the way um that, that families think about what they want and need is a fabulous counterbalance and counterpart to the way that professionals think about what people want and need. And, you know, personally have been involved in creating a lot of programs that people want and some programs that people don't show up for, you know? And so the, the power of having people at the table while you're brainstorming and thinking just cannot be underestimated. So um, this is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
I see no more hands.
All right, and let's move on to the next part of the presentation. Um, back to you.
And I will hand it to my brilliant and talented colleague, Becca. Thank you, Sharona. Um, really appreciate that, that overview and sort of that, that thoughtful voiceover to the framework that we have to date. Um, so in this section, I am going to do a deeper dive into our shorter term system outcomes and talk about how they connect both to each other and to our longer term outcomes that Sharona overviewed. Um, I'm also going to take a peek at sort of the public systems we are looking to prioritize. I will note, uh, my section is new information, so this will not be for um approval before the board in November, but wanted to invite um the commission into sort of our initial thinking, where our heads are at, um, and get your sort of initial reactions and feedback um as we start to refine these short term outcomes. So as we've been developing this framework, we know a question we all hold um is what does this mean for our work? How will the work change? How is it going to look different? Um, and as Antoinette mentioned, throughout the next year, we will be updating and shifting our work. So I will not be able to answer that question directly in this presentation, um, but these long term and short term system outcomes are the first step to that answer. Um, and I will, I will echo what Sharona said, this material will be dense. Um, but as we get sort of closer to operationalizing our refined strategic plan, just want to continuously bring us back um to the central point Sharona right raised, which is how do we make systems work better for families? And these short term system outcomes are where the rubber starts to meet the road. So they are the outcomes that will have immediate impacts on how prioritized systems operate and function, ultimately getting us closer to the place where systems meet the diverse family needs and overcome those historic inequities that we know cause disparities um even before birth. So with that, let's get started and dive in. Um, before we move into the short term outcomes we relentlessly pursue over the next three to five years, I want to reiterate what Sharona said. These long term outcomes are both interdependent and interconnected, meaning that we will have to advance them simultaneously. Progress in one area is going to support progress in another area. And again, sort of hoping this gear graphic helps to demonstrate this, um, that these outcomes sort of move and reinforce each other. And like these longer term uh system outcomes, our refined short term outcomes are also interrelated and interdependent. So this puzzle piece graphic shows that some of the shorter term outcomes can be sequenced um with those on the bottom rows being more foundational and then building towards the top rows. But at the same time, they're also mutually reinforcing. So these are outcomes we want to achieve both within systems and across multiple systems. So by that, I mean, we want all the systems we prioritize to exhibit these qualities. And by achieving them in the short term, we'll be making progress towards our longer term outcomes. So I'm going to provide an overview of these refined short term outcomes, do a little bit of a deep dive, and then after that, I'll provide some examples of those connections between these outcomes. And then after that, I'll provide some examples of those connections between these outcomes. And just want to note again that our theory of change and its outcomes are focused on a vision of transformed systems. That really center the perspective of families and children. So if these outcomes are achieved, they will address the specific needs of families and children. So let's get into it. Um, so the first set of short-term outcomes we're going to overview contribute most directly. To what we are calling accessible and equitable long-term outcomes. So I like to sort of think of this grouping of outcomes as describing how families are going to get into systems. And then what their experience, experience is like once they are within those systems. So as I mentioned earlier, um, the short-term outcomes under these two will really contribute to all four of the long-term outcomes. Um, but we're trying to group them in a way that's a little bit um, easier to understand. So I'm going to start kind of at the bottom and work my way up. Um, because these short-term outcomes build towards those 10-year long-term outcomes, and so there is some, some sequencing. So if we get into accessible, our first short-term outcome is related to eligibility. So for this outcome, we are looking at eligibility criteria within systems to be lowered, to be simplified. And to be consistent across multiple systems. Ultimately, we want fewer barriers for families as they access systems. We move from eligibility to entry. So for this outcome for entry, we want systems to feature multiple ways for families to gain access into them. How can we create multiple front doors for families? And then lastly, we have comprehensive. So if families have a simplified enrollment process and they can access systems from multiple points. So getting our eligibility and entry outcomes done. We would then like families to have access to multiple systems simultaneously. Offering multiple services and multiple supports. So we're calling this outcome comprehensive. An example of this would be, could a family be offered childcare at the point of Medi-Cal enrollment or during a well-child uh, visit? So how are we ensuring that families can seamlessly access multiple systems through a single entry point? So now that families have improved access to systems, they are in, what is their experience within that system? And for that, we transition to the set of outcomes under a long-term outcome related to being more equitable. So in order to achieve this long-term outcome, we also have three short-term outcomes. So first we have connectivity. So we are looking to create a network of supports and services that connect families to multiple options. So we need to build that infrastructure, which would include formal and informal struc- structures and networks. We're talking data and referral systems that are going to allow this connectivity. Next is choice. We want to offer families the type of support that they prefer. Are there options for families and provider type, setting type, et cetera, that can meet families' unique needs and preferences? For example, can families find a childcare provider that matches their home culture and language? Is close to home, available for the hours needed and affordable? Do families have choices and options that work for them? So then finally, and most importantly, under this long-term system outcome, we have trust. So this third short-term outcome that we will achieve after systems provide connectivity and choice. Is referring to the fact that systems only function if families trust them to participate. So systems need to change their internal cultures. Systems need to start with an assumption of trust on families and an assumption of best intent. And shift away from ostracizing families um, as we are currently seeing in systems. And again, this sort of gets back to the central point Sharon and I have been referencing. Which is we want families to experience seamless support and be able to build resilience from the earliest moments. However, systems are currently designed and incentivized to function sort of in the opposite way. Okay, so we have talked about how families will gain access to systems and what their experience will be like within the systems. But what is informing the design of those systems? How do we know what this should look like? Our next two sort of longer-term outcomes form the basis of systems design. How are systems co-designed with families and communities? And how does the financing of systems reinforce this vision and design we have for systems? So the first long-term outcome is around power sharing. And under this outcome, we have the short-term outcomes of capacity, power and responsive. And again, want to note that these short-term outcomes will also contribute to the other two long-term outcomes. Um, but we're just illustrating where there's particularly high alignment between short-term outcomes and long-term outcomes. So the first short-term outcome is related to capacity. So we know that both systems and communities need to deepen their ability to partner in order to form deep collaboration. Which will in turn support families' ability to provide safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments. For children prenatal to five. Next is power. This is where we will work to ensure communities gain the power to shape and hold systems accountable. Even if that means that the systems themselves must cede some of the power they currently hold. And then finally, we have responsive. So once systems increase their capacity and their power sharing, we want systems to be more responsive. So systems need to have structures and processes in place that both prioritize and institutionalize partnership with communities. An example of this would be, can First Five L A ourselves institutionalize co-designing of our strategies with the folks most impacted? We really want public sharing to become part of the fabric of our public systems. Finally, uh, we come to the long-term outcome around financing. Or frankly, what I like to bluntly call the carrot and stick outcome. Um, and this is about how systems are funded to incentivize this overall vision we have for systems. So the first outcome we have that will help us achieve that long-term outcome around financing mechanisms is diversity. So we want systems to encourage and allow participation from a diverse range. Of CBOs to ensure families truly have choice within systems. Next, we have stable. So essentially, do systems have enough financing? Is that financing durable? Are they able to adequately operate? And the last two are, are related to each other, um, and are sort of the, the carrot portion um, of this outcome. So through financing mechanisms, our systems incentivized and prioritized to have a prevention orientation. Focusing on children prenatal to three and focusing on communities who have historically been under-resourced. For example, can Medi-Cal reinforce quality expectations? With an incentive arrangement for Medicare managed clear care plan contracts. That prioritizes preventive care like developmental screenings. So this is the same graphic you saw earlier. Um, but now that we've kind of defined and reviewed our proposed and draft short-term outcomes. I want to take a second to just uplift um, a few examples of how these short-term outcomes not only. Contribute to the long-term system outcomes, but also how these short-term outcomes are interrelated. So this won't be a comprehensive list of examples, but just a few to demonstrate. Um, how all of these outcomes really are interconnected and interdependent.
And, and Becca, given our timing, may, maybe two examples, because I know you also want to talk about, um.
The public systems.
Public systems, how about?
Yes, yeah, no, no, thank you for the time check. Okay, so let's do two examples. So the first example, we have diversity um, being closely tied to choice. So for our diversity short-term outcome, we are looking for greater participation of locally trusted BIPOC-led CBOs within our public systems. This greater diversity is going to allow families to have more choice when it comes to provider or service type. And this choice will allow families to meet their own unique needs and preferences. This other example is actually about a short-term outcome that is interconnected to everything on this graphic. Um, and that outcome is the outcome of trust. Um, it undergirds this entire framework. Um, and we want to see systems again assume trust with families and become a trustworthy resource for families. Families have to feel dignity, respect and a lack of stigma if they are to participate in our public systems. So this framework is large, it is comprehensive. Um, and as I said earlier, we still need to do the work to determine how this will change and shift our work. And part of that process or initial first step is we have to start thinking about which systems are we going to focus on, which systems will we narrow to? Um, and during that crucial time period of prenatal to three years old. Um, we see sort of three areas that are particularly important. The first, healthcare. Healthcare is nearly universal and it's the first system with which a vast majority of pregnant people come into contact. It is also has responsibility for monitoring and supporting the health and wellbeing of both the baby and the parent. And we have childcare becomes increasingly important as it is a central place for child development. It has responsibility for child development and becomes increasingly important as that caregiver returns to work. And then lastly, we have basic needs. Um, as was talked about earlier, if basic needs aren't met, it doesn't really matter how these other public systems are functioning. And it's really within the family and the home is where that parent-child bond is established. And that is most responsible for meeting the full range of child's basic and developmental needs. So how do we support that? So again, as we think about some of these systems and we think about our framework, we can again start to offer some examples of what systems change might look like. One example is sort of, and, and I'll, I had three examples, I will narrow it to two. Um, one example is healthcare could serve as an initial hub. Connecting families to a comprehensive set of services and supports. Again, for example, during a well-child visit, Medi-Cal families could be automatically connected and enrolled into CalFresh or WIC. Or CalWorks. We know Medi-Cal is already well-positioned to serve as this hub. Fifty percent of births in California are Medi-Cal. And with the continuous eligibility, the system is now able to provide. Many of these families will mean, remain connected to the Medi-Cal system for that entirety of prenatal to five. A second example I'll offer up is for basic needs. Systems can begin to trust families and we can start to shift away from voucher-based support to direct cash assistance. For example, supports like universal basic income, paid family leave and the child tax credit. Simply provide families with more income without precondition or limitation on how that money could be spent. And with this kind of support, we wouldn't need to see many of, so many other interventions down the line. But to do this, we would also need systems to trust families and trust families that they know what is best for them. And that they know how to spend that income most effectively for those families. Currently, most systems don't have that trust, but we are starting to see those shifts take place. Again, these are just sort of illustrative examples. They're not necessarily outlining or deciding work that First Five L A will pursue at this point. And we know that we have more work to do to further narrow. Um, we are not going to be able to lead on all of these outcomes or with all of these systems. Um, so that will be the work we will undertake um, over the next year. So with that, um, I will open it up for discussion. So I just want to thank you for following along as I did a deep dive. I know it was a lot of information, um, but sort of given this overview, would love to hear what resonated with you. For both our short-term outcomes and public systems we might prioritize. And is there anything else we should consider as we continue to work on this draft?
Okay, that was a deep dive and I hope we don't get the bins coming up out of it. Um. I'm certain that people will have questions and comments, so Judy, if you'll look around and see if that is the case.
I do, oh, here's that Astrid has a hand up.
Although I'm completely intimidated by all of us, um, I'm going to suggest that. For whoever created this PowerPoint uh, slide presentation, it was wonderful. It is also a little bit in my mind remembering my father. Uh, thank you very much, Antoinette, for remembering your father. Um, I used to say this feels a little bit like pie in the sky when I die. Um, and I know that many of you would agree with that. Uh, I would invite those of you which on the team that wrote this are really interested. To come and look at what a hub site, why it was created, what the barriers are. Where the bureaucracy gets in the way of taking care of these families. Because the ultimate goal of creating that was exactly what you just described. And it is the bureaucracy and the barriers that have pulled it aside and, and, and made it very difficult. To provide for these families what they really need. And the last thing I ever said in the Gabriel Fernandez documentary was true evil. Lies with those who have the power to bring change and choose not to do so. And I will stand by that statement and say, we have the power to bring change. And, but we, but we also really need to be realists about where the barriers are. And I, uh, I have never had a family come in and say, help me get around the bureaucracy. But I've had, I've had tens of thousands of patients come in and ask me to help them find food. And that meant then not a, a, a voucher to go to a food bank that was closed on Saturdays and Sundays. That's just one example, but I invite you to come, the civil grand jury has come, the Blue Ribbon Commission has come. And I'll be very honest, I'll be more honest with you there than I will ever be on the screen. So you are more than welcome to come anytime. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, we have Remolus.
Okay. First of all, Becca, nice seeing you again. Good job. Um, just some things to start with your diagram. I love the fact that you started from the bottom, but I'd like to see arrows going from the bottom up. Like you're talking about across each one of these uh, documents. Remember to put the word procedure in each place that you have policy and procedure. But in the first one, you had one under accessibility. The key is uh, facilitating navigation and the coordination. The problem is there's some cross-systems issues that go in and then. And, 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 and that affect the issue of getting services. Uh, I, I'm going to steal my friend, don't, don't get mad at me, Tara. But under Help Me Grow, the big issue was after you get an assessment. Helping the family go to the regional center and get connected. They don't understand it, they don't have any way. So one system drops it off and says, here's a referral. And then how do they get in there? They don't even understand the system. So that the handoff should be guided, should be helpful in both ways, both ways. So that it can be done and that, this is just one example of a system where the thing falls apart. So I go back to coordination, facilitation and navigation, right? The handoff to that, if you want people to get what they need. Uh, I want to go on to something else and the, in the trust thing. That you're talking about, the healed, the whole deal is getting these systems to understand the needs of the people. Who are they dealing with? What are the issues and be more sympathetic to the needs versus judgmental and controlling. And the end result is the people don't get what they need because when they come to and they're turned off, right? And this is the other thing I want to get to on the last page. Uh, when you get to it for uh, the issue, hold on, I think I got it. Uh, I like the idea of, of the different uh, diverse providers. That's very important. Uh, but these other systems that interact with these families, that destroys families because of their. Their believing they have to be enforcers rather than helpers. Give you an example is DCFS. Another one is DPSS. Because the system is designed to be more judgmental and more controlling rather than helpful. Then the system by design turns these families off and shuts down their trust. And, 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 and it's not the people, it's the design of the system that's doing it. And when I'm talking about it, I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about the organization as designed, is it ineffective? Um, and I'm going to throw this out one more time, people don't listen. But the bottom line is when we did point of engagement, we proved the child welfare system as designed. Is failure and does not get it done. Because at every point that you come in contact with these people, you see they have a need, you should be helping them. Rather than just walking away and say, oh, I've done my job, I don't have to do it. You see him struggling, give him help, connect him to services to make sure, that's different. And when people came to my office, they saw that and it was different. And when people came to my office, they saw that and it was different. I had community people come in that hated DCFS. And when we brought them in, I brought them in and heard that and listened to what they said and brought them into the solution. The empowerment you're talking about. But most of these governmental agencies don't want to deal with community, they don't want to hear it. So then you got to bring them in so they can hear it and understand you need to change how you're doing business and connecting to the community. If you don't do that, then the community will not hear you. They will turn you off and they will see you as an interloper into their lives and into their community rather than an agent of help. And so that's why you have to change the mindset of the organization, which is what point of engagement did. So helping along the way. And what am I talking about? That's going to be hard because we reduced the number of children coming into child welfare by fifty percent. And where where did those people go? They went to the people we gave them to to get them the help that they needed. So they didn't become a part of the system. Does that mean the system is eliminated? No, there are going to be people that don't get it. And no matter what you do, they're going to hurt those children. And those are the people that we take to court. Those are the people we really supervise and help if we can. If not, get them with their family members and relatives. The the point is, is when you have a team decision making, if you don't bring the family in, then we have no way of knowing where that child can go that is within their family rather than a system. And and that's hard because you have other things set up to put these kids in foster care and all this other stuff. So it's it's a tough decision, but it's the right decision. There it has to be balanced. There are going to be kids that have to be taken into the system. There are going to be things that have to be done, but it doesn't require it in every case. So what does that mean, the reduction into the system? So I'm just saying, that's an example of how the system can be changed and still do its job without uh creating the kind of havoc we do on these poor communities where poverty is the issue. Not the the hurting of children and the neglect was the major issue, not hurting them. It was poverty. So we have to be clear when we have worked with our government agencies, what is the issue? Why are we doing it? And the cross connection is they took a lot of babies and children that could have been served to go into a health like you're talking about. So this cross system connection, even within those systems, has to happen and be codified by uh MOU or whatever it is so that it doesn't affect the things. DPS, this is another one. You know, so the trust, the issue. Uh, the system has to understand, has to be both ways, like you say. But they're cross cutting. And when they run into a problem and the parents are saying, I need help, they should be able to connect them to the health system, to the childcare system. There should needs to be this intersection to help them do their job even better. So I'm I'm just kind of saying you're on the right track. But I, when you get to the deep dive of the cross system connection, it's going to be very important. And the policy, procedure, and practice is the key to getting them to do it better. Because when they go and create these practices, they're not really thinking about the community's perspective on what they're doing. They think about the agencies and what the legislation said. And that they think that touch gets it done and it doesn't. So I'm just throwing that out there. And uh, thank you for a good presentation.
You're welcome. Yeah, and I just, um, I think your confirmation of like the idea that that short term outcome of trust really undergirds um, sort of all of these changes we want to see i- is an excellent point.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I see no more hands.
All right, let me make one uh final comment before we close the public hearing. Uh, one of the things that I think it's important for First Five L A to consider is um, how does a funder affect policy? Or the ways that systems operate? I mean, for thirty years, I've not only been had a seat at the table, but I've been in many rooms where it happens. And um, that is really where systems operate. Although it it's difficult even in leadership sometimes to move uh a system uh and it happens a little at a time. So I think it might be important to identify how a funder influences systems change. Because essentially, we are an incentivizer and a petitioner, but not in charge of changing a system. Uh, some funders will hmm offer to fund a pilot that does some of the things that uh commissioners have been talking about or try to do for themselves to set an example about what a system could scale up and do. Whether it's the court system, the justice system, various levels of government, um, et cetera. Uh, another is, you know, they offer to fund evaluations to help uh a system see if it's headed in the right direction, if it doesn't, hasn't put in enough for evaluation. Um, there's been discussion of the warm handoff. And um, you know, a pilot project about a warm handoff. Or we had in the beginning, uh, DCFS did not have a fa- family finding unit. And it was funded from outside to show how much good it could do. And now we have family finding units in every office. Um, but, you know, it and and it's made a difference. That's the kind of system change only a system can do, but a funder can help exemplify the possible. So I think it may be good to identify for us in a somewhat realistic manner what a funder like First Five L A, the kinds of things that funders do to affect systems change or to at least encourage a system to change and see how it can want to make itself better. Uh, so thank you very much for the presentation. It was uh quite wonderful and I know that we'll return to adopt some of these uh in the November meeting. Um, as a beginning point for phase two. And I um, if there are no other hands, I hereby declare that this public hearing is, oh, wait one second, are there any public comments uh on this item?
There are no public comments on this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is closed. Uh, the only item remaining is general public comment for items not on the agenda. Uh, has anyone requested to address the commission on items not on the agenda?
Confirming there are no general public comments.
Okay, well, this was a good one and a um full docket, as they say. I'm very grateful to the commission for thoughtful listening and response. Uh, very grateful to the staff uh at every level who've had any uh hands on any of the presentations and the development of the material. Uh, look forward to our next uh meeting and the various committees on which uh we all participate. And is there any other business that uh I should uh consider or call on before we adjourn? All right, hearing done. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.